Oh, they're right there. I wish the kids were there earlier. Should I go ask them and take it away from Bennett?
And now we convene the regular meeting of Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Bridge, Cruz, Na, and Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Pat?
The board met in closed session from 4:50 PM to 5:40 PM regarding conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, one matter, student discipline matters, conference with labor negotiators, ACT and CSCE, public employee appointment, elementary school principals and associate superintendent, human resources, and public employee performance evaluation superintendent.
Thank you, Pat. Tonight's-
The board appointed Leah Fellows as Associate Superintendent, Human Resources, effective July 1, 2023 by a vote of 4-0 with Bridge, Cruz, Na, and Shaw voting yes, Monroe absent. And appointed Denise Gonzalez as Principal, Walnut Elementary School, effective July 1, 2023 by a vote of 4-0 with Bridge, Cruz, Na, Shaw voting yes, and Monroe absent. No further action was taken, which requires public disclosure.
Thank you, Pat. And congratulations, Ms. Fellows. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Art Bennett.
It's my honor and privilege to be here tonight. Please raise or rise, your right hand on your heart, and join me in the salute to the flag to the greatest nation on earth. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. God bless America and God bless the Chino Valley Unified School District.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Okay, we are now on at another annual favorite, the check presentation representing the generosity of participants at this year's Julie Goldman Memorial Hit for the Greens for Scholarships event. Tim Adams from School Portraits by Adams Photography and his team truly symbolize the commitment and close relationship between community and schools. Their exceptional efforts ensure that many of our students begin their college experience with some financial support. With that, Mr. Adams, please join me at the podium and share with us how successful this year's scholarship raising event was.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tim Adams with School Portraits. As you said, I wasn't nervous until you made that speech. That's a lot to live up to, so. Fourteen years, it seems like we just started this a few years ago. I'm very proud of it. We had a record year as far as the proceeds from the golf tournament, and I didn't remember it. So, we are here tonight to present to you a check for $29,805.61, which is a record for us. So, I'm very proud of this. We couldn't do that without the support of the school district, without the amazing golfers, Mr. Cruz and Shaw. The team for the most honest, I think. And our community, all the sponsors really came together this year. It was amazing. We had our very first 10,000 level sponsorship, so that's amazing. And the golfers that came out, they gave up a day to hang out with us and dig holes in the ground over at La Serrano. So, for that, we hope that you guys will join us next year. You guys can tell them how fun it was. We want to invite everyone to come out and come play golf and help us raise money for the kids. So, we're honored to do it. We have a date for next year if anybody's interested. I forgot that as well because you made that beautiful speech and now I'm nervous. So, hold on a second. It is March 18, 2024. We'll be back at La Serrano, so save that date if you can. Come out and join us, and it's for an awesome cause. So, thank you. Can I take a picture?
Yes.
Awesome.
Now to another favorite part. We are now at recognitions. Our first guests are special, and I saw them all come in in the back. There are Country Springs Elementary School students led by Odyssey of the Mind coaches, Mrs. Ling Chen and Mrs. Catherine Osman, both teachers at Country Springs. Ms. Osman and Ms. Chen, can you please meet me at the podium with your awesome students? Ms. Osman, can you please also share with everybody a little bit about the competition with the amazing success the students were able to achieve when we get there?
One cold rainy night in February, our team was finishing up our props and wondering how to get them safely through the rain forecast for the next day to Moreno Valley High School to compete in the Odyssey of the Mind Regionals. Most were made of paper, cardboard, or paper mache, and some were quite large, including an enormous gift box on wheels. But we and our props survived the deluge the next day, won, and went on to state competition. Won there and this last week, May 24th to 28th, competed at Odyssey World Finals in Michigan State University. Our school district has supported us in our Odyssey through the Odyssey program, paying for our membership fees at the different levels, and donating generously to our travel expenses to Michigan. We thank you very much. Odyssey of the Mind is a creativity competition sponsored by NASA and Armin Hammer Soda. It is open to students from kindergarten to post-college. There are age divisions meant to make judging fair, including K2, called primary, Division 1 comprising grades three to five, Division 2, grades six to eight, and so on. Our team is very diverse, not ethnic-wise, but age-wise. We have mostly a Division 1 team, third through fifth graders. Let me introduce them. Ethan Chen, third grade. All right. And then we have Jolene Lee, Peyton Chen, and Kimberly Lee, who are fifth graders. But we also have Mr. Chase Sun, who's over there on the other side, who's a second grader. Sabrina Zhang, who's a sixth grader. Since the oldest child determines the division, she put us over the edge into middle school. So, our team, mostly Division 1, competed in middle school Division 2. She's worth it, though. She not only performed brilliantly, she also wrote her script, and by the way, she won the Design the Yearbook Cover Contest at our school conference press. Our Odyssey skit was "The Walls of Troy," all about the Greek epic classic poem, "The Iliad and the Trojan Horse." We spent our meetings for the first three months just reading together "The Iliad." We didn't finish this somewhere around 500-page tome, even with Chase reading ahead and telling us when we could skip a chapter because it was all warfare. But we did read enough to know about its characters, its beautiful descriptive language, and the theme of pridefulness. So, our script was about pridefulness and how Athena, goddess of wisdom and overcoming obstacles creatively, operates in the modern day. Our competition at Worlds was fierce. After all, these were considered the best teams of their respective states and countries. And considering our age status, perhaps 33rd in a field of 54 teams was okay. We had a wonderful time at the Odyssey Finals. They were interesting and exciting things to do every day. There was a creativity festival. We went to the Broad, the art museum associated with LA County Museum of Art. There was a float and banner parade, a huge climbing tree, and a plentiful buffet of delicious international foods every day. Watching other teams perform, though, and the opening and closing ceremonies with light shows and famous people was still not the best. The best was meeting other creative, hard-working kids from around the nation. Twenty-six other states were represented and around the world, from Poland, Germany, Switzerland, France, China, Hong Kong, Japan, Korea, Singapore, and Mexico. There were 749 teams in all in attendance. It was an experience of a lifetime. Thank you again.
You guys are extraordinary. Thank you for all that you guys do. Keep up the good work. Thank you for the coaches also helping and supporting them. I want to present each of you a certificate from our district, just recognizing the great work that you guys have done. And wow to hear that you guys put yourself at a higher age level. I think 33 is awesome and amazing, so good job.
Good job.
We have Chase Sun. Chase, congratulations. Good job. Ethan Chen. Good job. Kimberly Lee. We have Jolene Lee. Peyton Chen. Last but not least, we have Sabrina Zhang. Can we get you in the front and take a picture with you? I know you're rather shy. You're rather going in front of a lot of people. You guys are pretending right now, right?
Yep.
The coaches do, please? And you can, yeah. Well, maybe close it, guys, with your names around there and stuff. Maybe that's better.
Ready? One, two, three.
Doc Grayfield.
Thank you.
Five, two, three.
Thank you. And you guys do not have to stay for the remainder of these meetings. I know you probably got a lot of fun stuff to do.
Thank you.
If you want to stay, of course you can stay. If you want to leave.
Should I just, should I just stay down there? Or is it better this way? It's okay. Yeah.
She's a good writer, too.
Special thank you to all of our students and families for coming out tonight. We are now on to another exciting moment to recognize some amazing people supporting our students. Next, I would like to invite another group of our partners who do what they do best to support student success. We are blessed to have a team of athletic trainers and community-focused medical doctors, ensuring that our student athletes have access to emergency care, preventative services, clinical assessment, therapeutic intervention, and rehabilitation of injuries and medical conditions, when and if necessary. Without them, the safety and competitive success of our student athletes cannot be, could be compromised. Tonight, we recognize the following individuals who have given time and time again of their expertise, care, and encouragement to our athletes. Please join me at the podium as I call your name. We have Dr. Tiffany Anderson Terrell, Dr. Brian Lovelace, Mrs. Kayla Willie, Mrs. Gianna Aguilar, Mr. Kevin Sells, and Ms. Kim Hansen.
Thank you so much. And of course, if you would like, we'd please like you to tell us a little bit about everything that you guys do for our students.
Thank you. We collectively have been participating in working with our students for over 20 years. Dr. Tat and I started out as residents at Chino Valley Medical Center, working with our program director, Dr. Lally. And one of the first things we were assigned to do was to be assigned to a high school to cover the football teams. And I began at Chino Hills High School in 2004.
Wow.
And you began at Ayala, I think, the same year?
2003.
2003. So, we've been there for a long time, gone through a lot of principals, several trainers, several athletic directors. We've been through most of it. And we've got an opportunity to work with some amazingly well-trained people. The athletic trainers really do the majority of the work. We're there to support them, but they're the ones who know the kids. They're the ones that are handling the injuries. They're the ones that are doing really the most of the work. Over the last 20 years, we've had the opportunity to perform pre-participation physicals for incoming athletes. This year, we did 996 over the course of a weekend. Almost all of that money gets donated back to the athletic training programs. In that time span, it's been close to $1 million that we've brought in that we've then given back to the athletic training programs. So, we love these folks we work with. We love the kids. We just want to see them be healthy and safe, and it's just a blessing to get to work with the local school district.
Yes. Thank you for your partnership. Thank you for letting you guys come on the site. We appreciate it so very much. This is just a small token of our appreciation. Dr. Tiffany Anderson Terrell, thank you so much. Thank you. Dr. Brian Lovelace, thank you again for all that you do. Mrs. Kayla Willie. Will, did I say Willie?
It's Willie. Yep. You had it right. Sorry.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
And Ms. Gianna Aguilar. Thank you for all that you do. And Mr. Kevin Sells.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Ms. Kim Hansen.
Yes.
Okay. The writing was all fancy, so it throws me off with that H. Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts, and we just love everything that you do, and we appreciate everything that you guys do on the site and everything that you guys do on and off the site and giving them the support. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to Dr. Lovelace as well for continuing to support our students.
Yeah.
If you guys can join our group with a picture, that would be amazing. That's where we can't stand behind little kids in this one.
One, two, three.
Thank you again for being here tonight. We have a lot to do outside. So, thank you again. Thank you. We appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay, another one. Amazing, exceptional support we get here in Chino Valley. This one's also near and dear to my heart because I saw firsthand how much sacrifice and just the willingness to stand up. Tonight, we conclude our recognitions, last but not certainly least, with the Chino Hills High School and the staff who provided some additional campus safety support. It goes without saying that the safe schools and a positive school climate are essential to keeping students learning on campus. When they are safe and in a peaceful environment, students can focus on learning. Recently, some outstanding individuals took up the call and linked arms to provide the Chino Hills High School campus with some needed support. As I call your name, please join me at the podium and know that we appreciate you deeply. Just reading from here. Andrew, I don't want to butcher the last name. Moncaio? Macao? Jacob Hayes? Maybe they're not here. Richard Carroll? David Magalinas? Yasenia Guzman? Edgar Larios? Rosemary Sierra? Gloria Ruiz? Wendy Morales? Stephanie Garcia Blinkenship? Caesar Rodriguez Solares? Yay. Regina Ramirez?
Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule and joining us. We just want to thank you for taking the extra call and going in and helping our students keep their campus safe. It means a lot to us. We know that's not your main duty here at Chino Valley, but just you being able to move from bus driving and into an extra calling, that's just amazing, and it means a lot. Our students needed that support, and to have somebody who knows our students on campus, it immediately cut out the fire. So, we appreciate you so very much. Thank you for what you did, and you get to be the only one in our picture.
I like that much, sir. Appreciate it.
And thank you for coming tonight. Thank you again.
Before I move on, I just want to say how much we appreciate our current security officers on campus, too. They work tirelessly, endlessly tirelessly to keep our students safe, and we do appreciate them. I know I've mentioned it before, but again, again, thank you and thank you again for all that you guys do. Okay, now we concluded the very fun, great part. We're on to some next fun stuff. We have comments from our employee representatives. Brenda Walker from ACT, I don't think she's here. Then we have Mr. Danny Hernandez from CSCE.
Good evening, President Shaw, board members, Dr. Enfield, cabinet, and community. My comments will be brief, simply because the athletic trainers, a lot of the stuff that they do gets overlooked. When they are on a football campus, or excuse me, a football field, or any sporting event, they're not responsible just for Chino Valley Unified School District students, but for all students and staff. Many times in sporting events, especially in high school sports, they can become a little excited. They don't hesitate to put themselves in harm's way, jump in between students with not a care to their own. They do this every day. And it's not just sports. Sometimes when the students are within their classes, sometimes a cold, a rash, needs to be brought to the attention of staff and/or the community. They are not doctors, but they take a lot, along a lot of the same trainings. A few years ago, the group had submitted a, what we call a reclassification request. A lot of the stuff that they do that's coming up has to do along the lines of a lot of medical training. It's stuff that will happen. So, at the time, when it does hap, or when it does come to fruition, when the staff does, and we hope that they do resubmit their reclassification requests, so that we can truly pay them for what they are doing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We have Barbara Baird in from CHAMP.
Good evening, President Shaw, school board members, Dr. Enfield, cabinet, and the Chino Valley community. Congratulations to Mrs. Fellows and Mrs. Gonzalez on your promotions. Both are well-deserved honors. Congratulations to all the promoted sixth and eighth graders and the seniors who graduated last week. I hope you will always remember these special moments. Luckily, Andy Johnston, our CVUSD Director of Communications, treated us to amazing pictures from last week's ceremonies, so we can all remember those celebrations. Thank you, Andy. I hope she's still here. I want to take a moment to recognize the Canyon Hills Coyote Color Guard for their WGASC championship title on April 22, 2023. Our students' successes always inspire me. If you want to read more, there's information on our website. And I'd like to thank all the teachers who are devoting their summer to supporting our students, whether it is an ESY or special summer programs hosted at the different schools. I know our community appreciates you and your commitment to our students. I hope you all have a wonderful weekend, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Baird. Okay, now we're on to our comments from the audience on items not on the agenda. Pat, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
Four requests to speak.
Speakers will be called in the order the request was received. Please listen to your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration of that item. Once the board has commenced deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind that the board typically does not respond to comments during this time on the agenda, as it's reserved specifically for public comments. Individual members may respond during board comments at the end. Mr. Cruz, will you please explain the light system?
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the board, limit remarks to new points. Begin comments at the green light. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. The red light means your time is over. Please adjust the microphone as necessary. Please refrain from making comments while speakers are at the podium. And please note that the Board Policy 1312.1 outlines the procedure for anyone who wishes to file a complaint against a district employee.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Art Bennett?
I'm always used to the red light. Good evening, President Shaw, Dr. Enfield, board members, and executive staff. First and foremost, I want to congratulate all the seniors that graduated last week. As you know, the city of Chino Hills prides ourselves in the fact that we have 100% participation of all of our council members at the Chino Hills and Ayala graduations. And with respect to that, I want to make just a couple observations and comments to you so that you're aware of this. I understand that the board does not make the final selection as to where the graduations are going to happen, but due to the issues that were going on at both Ayala and Chino Hills, not anything to do with the schools themselves, but just because of all of the enthusiastic parents that wanted to attend the celebrations, parking was outrageous. There was not enough room in the stands for all the parents and guests that were there. And the reason I bring this up is, for several years, I probably attended at least a dozen graduations in the past. We used to have one night of the week on a 3 o'clock and 7 o'clock, we would have the two Chino Hills High School graduations. The next night, we would have the two Chino High School graduations. At the Toyota Arena, it was fantastic. The parking is adequate. There's much parking or availability of seating for the parents and family that want to attend. I'm not sure what the cost would be, but they do all of the setup. They do the cleanup. It just, I think, is a more enjoyable atmosphere so that the parents could fully appreciate the special night of graduation for their seniors. the special night of graduation for their seniors. So, just for consideration, I know that this may be something that has to be decided by individual principals, but I would think that everyone, I've heard so many comments about that this week, that hopefully consideration will be given to that for next year. I want to outline a couple things. First and foremost, our meeting times are going to change. Effective with June 27th, our meetings are going to coincide with the school district, the fire district, the, and we're going to be starting at 6:00. So, it's a great thing, I think, that we're going to be doing. Coming up this Saturday, we have National Trails Day. Join the city for a guided hike at the McCoy Trailhead on June 3rd at 9:00 a.m. There'll be door prizes, crafts, et cetera. On the sixth, or the third, excuse me, Summer Fun in Chino Hills, we're going to be returning to our Concerts in the Park. We'll have an eight series that will start on the, oh my goodness, the 15th, excuse me, on the 14th. Then we have an Independence Day celebration that will be happening on Monday, the 3rd of July, and National Night Out is coming up on August 1st, and we're encouraging people to get involved with their neighborhoods. We promote the, what am I, I'm trying to think of the police term for it, but it's for safe neighborhoods. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
You take care.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Darius Guzman?
Good evening, Board President Shaw, Board members and Cabinet. I'd like to bring up a couple of items tonight. First, I do want to thank you for sending out communication regarding the district parents as partners advisory committee earlier today. I had asked other parents previously if they knew about it. Many had not heard about it before, but my understanding is, the first meeting was actually already held on May 15, and representatives were selected by school administration from each school site. While I appreciate that the flyer indicates all parents' guardians can attend, it is important that it's widely shared and known ahead of time, and I'd like to suggest that for future committees, including such as the LCAP, that the district should send communication to all impacted parents' guardians to collect a pool of interest, instead of allowing school administrators to select their preferred representative and a backup. The purpose of this committee should be to improve our special education program. As we all know, it has its issues, and it can only improve if we include parents that have had their share of challenges and other different perspectives and work together collaboratively. Next, I'd like to address some upsetting rumors that I've heard being shared in different schools within the district. It's been heard that the district is pushing to eliminate father-daughter and mother-son dances. If this is true, it is truly upsetting. These special events create amazing memories for students with their parent, guardian, or loved one, and has already always been an inclusive event. Please remember that these are PTA-sponsored events created by volunteers that devote their time and energy to create extraordinary memories for our students. Don't try to change this, as it's going to cause a logistical nightmare for our PTA. If this is true, that we're eliminating these dances, I want it to be very clear and transparent on your purpose and motivation for that. This is another example of where we can work together as a district with school administration and with parents, instead of the district dictating the decision down. Thank you.
Thank you, Darius. Dr. Enfield, can I ask you to maybe look into that and see if that's a rumor or if it's actually true?
Yeah, I can address that in my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Glory Cicorelli? Hello, board, staff. Forgive me, I'm a little under the weather, but my dad told me that while it's good to come and make my voice heard, I need to be more specific with what I feel is needed. Be more specific on what I feel would be a home run for what I'm asking for. And so, to that end, that goes into another thing my father told me, which is, I want, he's a Christ-following pastor in Nigeria, and one time, I remember seeing him with a copy of the Quran, and I asked him why he would have that as a pastor. And he said, he needs to understand, when he's talking to an Imam or someone of a different orthodoxy, what their point of view is, how they feel, and how they interact with the different cultures and customs. So, to that end, one of the things I think we need is not just African-American history as an AP course in high school, but also Black History Month curriculum during February that is not about black trauma and is about black achievement. And also, a cotillion brings together all the black students from the district and reminds them that their culture is still relevant, is still current, and there's other black kids in the district, even if, like my own son, you're the only black one in your grade, let alone in your classroom. So, those are things I feel that the district can sponsor that will immediately affect a change in the black students of this district. Another thing I think is super important is equity and how concerns are addressed. I noticed last week, it hit me like a lightning bolt, that when certain groups come up here and speak, everyone's eyes are glued to them. But others, like myself, when they speak, everyone's either looking down or not paying attention, or, I'm not going to lie, I saw somebody asleep at one point. But also in communication, our concerns are never addressed, like ever. So, I just would ask that there's more equity in how concerns are addressed, because while you may not agree, and that's totally fine, I feel like it's important that, as elected officials, everyone's concerns are given equal weight, even if the end result is not what everybody wants. And I also want to take this time to highlight an employee that actually made a difference in my son's life, so it's not all gloom and doom. Ms. Fellows was one of the greatest principals that ever made a difference, and she's actually the one that inspired me to come here, when I realized that that's going to be her seat. She gives me the courage, and I just felt like I needed to say that this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Wales?
Okay, we're going to try something new. Okay, I wanted to start out by saying that a group of parents did consult with an attorney regarding the flying of pride flag rooms in the classroom. It's not been tested in a court of law, but it is going to be tested in the court of public opinion. I should state, however, that it was communicated during this consultation that there may be legal merit for what I'm going to discuss. Scholars of religious philosophy see the definition of religion, and that it tends to suffer from two problems. They're either too narrow and exclude many belief systems, which most agree as religious, or they are too vague, wide, generic, and ambiguous, suggesting that about anything can be considered religion. The Free Exercise Clause recognizes our right to believe in, practice our faith or not according to the dictates of conscience. The Establishment Clause bars the government from taking sides in religious disputes, or favoring or disfavoring anyone based on religion or belief or lack thereof. I don't believe in prayer in schools. And the reason I don't believe in prayer in schools is because my religion may be different than yours. I'm not going to shove my religion down your throat, because I wouldn't tolerate you if you had a different religion doing it to me. I don't support flying the Christian flag, because if you flew another flag in the class, I wouldn't tolerate it. So, I can't make an exception for myself, but then say you can't do it. We have no state religion. The pilgrims first came to this country to flee state religion. So, where this is leading me to is the definition of religion, ideology, identity, gender, anything you can think of. There is no reason or need to officially celebrate or recognize one's own sexuality. No one has a right to forcibly expose others to it, or have it pushed on their children. You are not in a position to dictate what conversations I have with my child, or when I have them. So, when do your perceived rights become privileged, and at what point do your rights start to violate the rights of others? School districts are the government, and you can't take sides. One person doesn't get preference over the other. So, what I want to bring up is, you can't have pride flags flying in the classroom. They're not equity, they're exclusivity. We don't have heterosexual flags, we don't have Christian flags, we don't have anything else in there. You fly the American flag, and you leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers. Thank you, Pat. We're now on to changes and deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions? Moving on to action items, the first item is 2A1. That's the Public Hearing Regarding the 2023/2024 Budget. It's recommended that the Board of Education conduct a public hearing regarding the 2023/2024 budget. I now open the public hearing at 6:40 p.m. Pat, do we have any speakers? I now close the public hearing at 6:40 p.m. Next item is 2B1. Public Hearing Regarding the Local Control and Accountability Plan. It recommends that the Board of Education conduct a public hearing regarding the Local Control and Accountability Plan. I now open the public hearing at 6:40 p.m. Pat, do we have any speakers? I now close the public hearing at 6:40 p.m. The next item is 2C1. That's the Public Notice and Hearing Regarding the California School Employees Association and its Chino Chapter 102 Initial Bargaining Proposal for the Chino Valley Unified School District for a Reopener Collective Bargaining Agreement effective July 1st, 2023. Recommends that the Board of Education give a public notice and conduct a public hearing regarding the California School Employees Association and its Chino Chapter 102 Initial Bargaining Proposal to the Chino Valley Unified School District for a Reopener Collective Bargaining Agreement effective July 1st, 2023. I now open the public hearing at 6:41 p.m. Pat, do we have any speakers? I now close the public hearing at 6:41 p.m. That concludes action items. We are now on consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items? Board members, do you have any polls? Mr. Bridge?
No polls.
Mr. Cruz? Mr. Na?
I have no polls.
And I have no polls. For the remainder, for the consent items, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
For Mr. Bridge? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes with a vote of four to zero. We are now at information items. Pat, are there any speakers to speak? Questions from the board? Seeing that there's none, we're on to communications. Mr. Bridge?
Thank you, President Shaw. I will be along with the rest of this meeting pretty quick with my comments. First of all, congratulations to Mrs. Fellows. That was nice to see that nomination and position come forward, and I know you'll do a terrific job. Also, I wanted to congratulate those students that were here tonight for their award, the Odyssey of the Mind. That is just a significant achievement, and really proud of them, and I appreciate them representing their school and our district and the job they did. Last week was a busy week for all of us. I was able to attend the Don Lugo graduation on Monday night, the Chino Hills graduation on Tuesday, the Buena Vista graduation on Wednesday, and also the Allegiance Steam Academy eighth grade promotion on Wednesday, along with the Adult School graduation on Thursday. I just want to congratulate all of the graduates in the district and those students that are promoted, and wish them all the best if they're going on to college or career jobs, or the military services we recognized two weeks ago. Just wanted to wish them the best. And also, those students that were promoted, just have an enjoyable summer. It looks, calendar-wise, like it's going to be very short with us coming back August 7th, but enjoy the time off. And then the last thing, I was able to attend the City of Chino Hills State of the City Address last night. Wonderful event, very informative, very proud of the city that I live in, and just congratulations on a nice evening and all the accomplishments that our city has done. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. Mr. Na?
Yeah, it was a busy week for all of us. Graduation, time is always an exciting moment. It's hard to imagine the children's growing up so fast, and they're ready for their college time and career time. So, thank you for all the teachers and staff members that you had invested your time, and also our district staffs and secretaries, who have been there, another set of parents. Thank you. From tonight's comment, I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Wales is kind of shocking. I'd like to ask Dr. Enfield to have our staff member meet up with Mr. Wales and look into what is going on in our classrooms and those flag situations, and that needs to be addressed and cleaned up. If it takes any actions in our part to do that, we need to be taking the first step and protect everyone's rights. Second, also, I hear our speaker talk about LCAP committee members' selection. I'd like to have our staff member review the selection process and make it more open to our parent group, and invite more people to join and gather their inputs. I always believe that we could get things done in a much better way if we share with more brain power, and so thank you for bringing those important concerns tonight. And tonight, I'd like to thank Dr. Lawley, a real person that we admire, and we owe greatly for all these years of public service to our athletes. You have been a really wonderful role model for all of our students put together, and you have been a leader for our athletic trainers program. I'd like to ask our president to invite Dr. Lawley personally, and I think we need to acknowledge his legacy with our school district. And also, Mrs. Osman, she had special skills. I had known her for almost 20 years, and she has this magic skills where she's able to communicate with all the children, regardless of their grades and age. It's a special gift that she had, and I can assure you, because of her, our gate programs have always been successful. So, I thank her for that. We have special people here, Julian, who has been promoted to attend, a little far away, but it's a promotion, so I'd like to congratulate Julian. We had Brennis, but I think she's not here right now. She left the room, but congratulate her, too. I think we have a full room of leaders that will shine, not only in our district, but wherever we go. I think we have the best cabinet members and best leadership throughout California. So, thank you for our cabinet members, and keep training our future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Na. Mr. Cruz? Thank you, Mr. Na. Mr. Cruz?
Hmm, I can't even read my own writing. Hold on, let me see what I wrote. Yeah, you know, Mr. Bennett meant we should we should create a survey and let the parents and the kids determine what type of graduation they want. You know, we used to have it at the Citizen Center, but like you stated, the Toyota Corolla Center?
Toyota Center.
The Toyota Center. So, yeah, next year, maybe we should do that, a survey and let the parents decide what they want. That's good. And then I think it's June ninth. Are we publicizing the Prado event?
Yeah, Andy has put that on peach jar and sent it out.
And as for the parent advisory meeting, if we have one parent that didn't hear the the date and so forth, then we should, you know, at least make up an effort next time to let all parents to have an opportunity to hear these meetings. So, we should do more digitally because there are people out there that do want to go, but you know, time constraints, working and all this. So, we should do something very repetitively where the majority of people hear the dates and the meetings of of any meeting concerning their children. And then and then what she stated about cultural awareness, I know that, you know, school district, we adopt curriculum, Dr. Enfield. And then I just get this feeling that, you know, from time to time, every year, if a teacher wants to teach philosophy, they, you know, counselors ask you, do you want to have philosophy class? And then they open it up, but at least there's a curriculum that's been adopted. Now, I I don't know exactly when, if there's a curriculum for African history. I know there's like like at my school district, you got the Chicano history and things like that. And if we don't have a curriculum like that, maybe a teacher should devise a curriculum, just pretending to pertaining to the history of of Africa. And then if a teacher so desires and there are students that want to take a course like that, they should have opportunities. Now, I don't know if the school district has an curriculum. Do you need to that?
I'll have staff look into that.
It's a good idea to have it there. Okay, you know, when it comes to graduation, you know, I, you know, where I'm at, and this is what I think a lot about graduation. I always tell these kids, I I I always tell them, and it year after year, and that is to like like I tell them to appreciate themselves, that their lives are so meaningful. And I also explain to them about their bodies that love your organs. I I say that in in quite in your house, in your room, you should say that you love your liver, your heart, your kidneys, because this is what drives you. A lot of times, we don't recognize that, but this is what's keeping you alive. And I always tell, you know, it's it's good to have a harmonious life and that is, you know, you do work because work is healthy and and you do exercise. Exercising is healthy too. And you go to school and I always tell I always tell the kids, you know, going to school, what happens is you it prolongs your life. It prolongs your youth. It's almost as if you've stopped and now you're waiting. And I tell them, if you don't go to school, you don't wind up looking like your parents early. You know what I mean? But but I I I tell them that your whole you have your whole view and 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 it's like a clean slate. And if you mess up, you always go to another pathway or to another pathway and everything's fine. So, and obviously, me looking, you know, I'm older. There's things that I have made mistakes, things like that. But I've had people that I have I have listened to, that I paid attention, said, you know, you know, it's nice to have a job that reflects who you are as a human being. You know, if you love people, you care about people, have a profession that that is is in that road. So, always be diligent when finding a career that fits you. And have a balance with your faith, work, and have some good friends where where you have all this foundation. So, it's good to be truthful to yourself. And also, I bring up the kids at school, you know, there's some great websites out there, you know, when you first start, it's really about managing your time. And I say, you know, you should use Rate My Professor to find teachers that are suitable for your modality of learning. And as you build confidence and confidence, you'll do better in life, better in school. So, I always always tell the kids that. And life is precious. It's so precious. Like I said, I emphasize the organs and everything about your body. No control, you just drive it. So, just remember to love your organs. So important. That makes sense, right? That makes sense what I said. I want to talk about memorial. Now, I'm I'm gonna go off something because I've been thinking about this a lot and that is Memorial Weekend. And I'd like to share my my uncle. I I really, this my uncle Lutheran, you know, he died in World War Two. But I've always had a connection with him. It's just a connection I have and I never met him, but there was two things I told my dad before he died. And that was number one, his faith, and number two, I'm gonna keep this. And so, so I have this, but this is so meaningful for me. It's just so deep and and I just, I'm just glad that I have it and my sisters didn't want it. And and I want to say something, you know, I went to a store. I went to a store because I heard a lot of rumors and all this and and I go in, I didn't see any memorial. I didn't see nothing. All I saw was right in my face, the gender bending stuff. I said, what's going on? What's what's going on here? I told myself. And then then it made me think. It made me think about the cycle, the news cycle where where for the past two years, they were talking about the COVID news, COVID. And now the cycle has has shifted, has shifted to the hyper sexuality of our children, brainwashing. It it just no more COVID. It's now replaced by this gender bending stuff and it's all over the place. It's it's all our ionic corporations are pushing that stuff. And you have to ask yourself, well, why are they losing all these billions of dollars? I tell myself. And and it's almost they're trying to cancel us, cancel us, because the only people they're counseling is the workers that work there because those are the ones that will get laid off. But it it's so bizarro. I I can't understand what's going on, but also at the same time, I find it intriguing that our our corporations, our American corporations would destroy themselves. So, so I I find it very quite fascinating. And also, they change language. I mean, like, for instance, you're not a male. You're cis male. You identify as yourself as a cis male. So, we all have to be really concerned the direction we're leading towards. There's some notes that I took. And I want to say something else too, because somebody brought this up that was quite interesting. You know, one to ten thousand during the sixties, you had autism, one to ten thousand. Now, it's like one to thirty six. There's been studies that have stated that a lot of autistic kids are transitioning. I mean, transitioning and and I've heard numbers like eighty percent of them become sterile, they're transitioning from boy to girl, girl to boy. So, we have to be vigilant. And I just want to read an article, an article on this this was in 2020. I I brought up the Wellness Center about being concerned. And here in 2020, it says, Alley County Planned Parenthood to open up fifty high schools, sexual health and well-being centers. There's a motive behind all this and that is to mess your kids up and to sterilize them. That is the end result. If this keeps ongoing, that's where it's going towards. And then I want to share something about Temecula, about a drama teacher doing something, a play that was inappropriate for kids. And so, well, one parent complained. You know, when it comes to adopting novels, adopting textbooks, you have committees and people decide. And I I've gotten in trouble where I wanted this novel because the teacher wanted it and I was in the process of purchasing it. And then my supervisor tells me, has it been adopted? And I should know better and I I'd apologize because things must be adopted. There's no excuse for a drama teacher to put something inappropriate because these children, they're still under the parent's authority. So, so when it comes to this, there is adoptions. You right, Dr. Enfield?
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, when it comes to all that stuff, if things get adopted, teachers don't do what they want to do or you get the superintendent embarrassed and the board embarrassed. And that's what happened to Temecula.
We have a process that we go through.
So, there's no excuse because reading this, oh, they have a process, you know, policy. Eh, not true. Okay? And like everything else, one person is enough. If one person disagrees, just like the restroom, there was a few people that preferred to using the female restroom and they thought, hey, that's okay, then we got to open up everything. Well, this is the same thing too. Have I missed anything? Yeah, yeah, it's it's like I said, it's amazing. I see my my uncle die for this country and nothing, nothing of our great men, of great American men that died for our freedom. Nothing, except all this stuff that I see that's so goofy, that's just brainwashing our children. The enemy is inside already. It's not out there. You know, we got two oceans. They're in already and they're destroying America. We have to wake up. Our we're going to suffer so much. We're going to, a lot of people are gonna start dying because they're here already and the border's being open and twenty thousand predators. That's what I heard, twenty thousand predators. And we have kids here. So, we got to be very concerned now. We always need to be concerned when it comes to our kids. Our kids are our priority because, well, look at us, fifteen, twenty years left of our lives. At least our children are still here. We got to do what's right for our kids or they're gonna suffer the most. Right, Sonia? And and Sonia and Dr. Enfield? Sonia might have a winery. I might get invited.
They have a winery?
Yeah. You mentioned it, remember?
A winery?
Winery where you take all your girlfriends. I said, you know, it'd be kind of nice to. Thank you very much.
What about your book?
Oh, my book. Um, I read this book a long time ago and it's a documentary, historical, and it's The Foxes of Booker Martyrs. So, I'm gonna give this to I'm gonna give this to Don Lugo.
I want to know where my winery is. I don't have a winery, Cruz.
No, you said something about Temecula.
I don't know. It's, oh, one of the moms has a avocado farm.
No, but you said your friends are going to winery.
I don't know.
We'll talk later.
Okay, Superintendent Dr. Enfield.
All right. First of all, let me clear up the rumor there. The district staff has not recommended to eliminate the father-daughter or mother-son dance. So, I could just tell you that's that's a rumor on that. Okay? And then I also want to apologize for the the confusion with the special ed meeting. There was a mix-up and parents should have been invited to the very first one. We got the flyer out and so we're trying to to correct that information on that. And again, I apologize because there was a mix-up on that and that flyer should have went out a while ago so everybody could have attended the very first meeting. Mr. Na, we did invite Dr. Lally. He was out of town to be here, so he couldn't make it. And again, I want to thank Dr. Lally for all the work that he does for our our school district. I don't know if people realize, but he's donated well over a million dollars.
Yeah, so when he's able to come and we can have a presentation.
Yeah, he's out of town and when he gets back, we were gonna meet up, but we'll we'll get him here to to recognize him for the great work that he that he always does for our district. Anytime we need something, he always is here to help and support us. I also, it's this time of the year, I'd like to thank our classified and certificated staff for all the work that they do day in and day out to make this a a great district. And with the closing of this school year, they did another phenomenal job. And again, this district wouldn't be what it's like without the classified and certificated staff. And so, I want to thank all them. And then lastly, I want to thank the Board of Education for taking my recommendation tonight and to approve Leah Fellows as the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. As some of you may know, Mrs. Fellow was in Human Resources about five years ago and she did an outstanding job. And I know she'll continue to leave a legacy when she goes back to H R in July. So, again, thank you, Board, for that. And that concludes my comments.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Enfield. Okay, so thank uh thank you, Mrs. Fellows, for for stepping up for that position. I have full confidence that you're gonna do amazing job and we appreciate you doing that. I also want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking, all of our attendees. You being here is is awesome, so thank you for that. I want to also thank my fellow board members for, I know if you guys can be at every graduation, you would. And you guys not being at every graduation hurt you and it hurt me because it it is an amazing honor to be there and see our kids, but thank you for just dividing and conquering and just making sure that at least two of us were at every graduation. That means a lot to our students and our families. Thank you to our staff for showing up and then being there with us and also for us first timers. We appreciate your guidance when you were there there. Thank you, Dr. Park, for for showing me the ropes at Ayala too. I appreciate that. That was my very first high school graduation. I was a fellow Bulldog. So, yes, on Monday, May twenty second, I had the honor of attending that graduation. Go Bulldogs. They say, once you're a Bulldog, always a Bulldog. And then on Tuesday, I got to attend Chino Hills High School graduation and that was also cool because my brother was the first graduating class. So, we had a Bulldog and a Husky in the house and my kids are Huskies, so that that's fun. Wednesday, we got to attend, I got to attend the Buena Vista graduation alongside every board member because that was the day that nothing conflicted. And it was beautiful to be there with them and our staff as well, just honoring our our kiddos there. On May twenty fifth, they also say, once a Ranger, always a Ranger. So, I don't know if that makes me a Ranger Bulldog or a Bulldog Ranger. But I I was a Ranger and I got to attend their promotion at the Husky Stadium and that was amazing, just to be able to be there and be part of that. May twenty fifth, I also attended the adult school graduation and that was a beautiful, that was just such a beautiful event, just seeing even grandma and I like to call them grandma and grandpas because some of them told me they were grandma and grandpas and just seeing them accomplish something and just continue to do and be the best them. That was that was very inspiring. And then also, on May thirty first, I along all of our board members and our amazing Board Secretary Pat, Kayla had attended the State of the City for Chino Hills. And that was also cool to see the highlights of the city since we have three cities in our district. Also, I my apologies for the special ed committee. When I asked for that to be designed, it was to have transparency and parents who are concerned to be able to have a voice. And that way, we can fix or at least work together to strengthen our special, our our need, the needs of these students and parents. And I apologize deeply that you were not notified of that and I am insured that that would not be the case going forward. So, again, my apologies. When we designed that or asked for it to be designed, it was in the mind of making sure our parents have a voice. So, I hope, I already know that the the flyer went out and I hope that more parents are able to attend and have a voice in that because your voice does matter. And then I felt the need to address something not so fun that's going on in our communities and schools right now. But it's something that needs to be addressed because it's brought to my attention from many community members. But day-to-day activities in life get us busy and rightfully so. I was voted in so you have someone to trust that is watching and advocating and ensuring that our district can remain what we all know and love it to be. We have some darn good educators, staff and coaches that sacrifice everything to ensure our kids have a chance at receiving their very best education. These times we're living in and the agenda being pushed onto our children needs to be addressed now to stand against and protect our children and no longer should any of us allow this insanity. There is tons of of business day in and day out that we're dealing with and that we get to be a part of, some good and some things that we have to fix. But with that, I'm so proud of our district for everything that they do and I will continue to support them and and do my best to give them the support that they need to do this job because they do a darn good job and and I don't want to see anything get in the way of that, but I also won't allow the insanity on my watch. Does this community know that wellness centers currently exist in almost all of our schools in our district already? Coming out of a pandemic, mental health awareness became very evident and we can all agree it has affected our children in a negative way. With that said, the state was throwing out grants to With that said, the state was throwing out grants to fund things like wellness centers at every school site. I encourage all parents to check out your school's wear wellness centers for yourself, because it's labeled as a safe safe place place and a place that you should trust, that your child can go to. Although I'm all in for supporting students during anxious times and helping them cope, I would like to present you with an example of where this could be headed. Very recently, it has been brought to our attention that there was a proposed plan brought by a leadership collaboration group through the local Chamber of Commerce, spearheaded by a local ex-politician. To add to a private, it was to add to a private room to a already built and furnished wellness center. I personally saw this wellness center at Don Lugo, and it was honestly, in my mind, if if you like them or not, one of the best wellness centers I've seen. It was beautiful. It raised concerns by many community members that this post was made. It raised a concern by me myself. The post, the board was never notified that an outside organization was attempting to build a private room in a wellness center on a school grounds, which is board business. It was never brought to our attention, and I want to make that very clear. The board, you guys watched the meetings, you're here, that was never brought to us. And from my understanding and learning, when you do construction on school property, that involves the board. That involves the board. You don't take that away, and you, nobody decides if they're going to do that without the board's decision. That is an important decision, and that takes a lot of effort to get approval when you change the property of a school. Fundraising was requested on a public post on social media for the furnishing of an already furnished wellness center. I just can't even believe I'm reading this, because this is true, this is this is real, this is happening. For the building of a private room in a wellness center that's already furnished and already built for a space for kids, to add a private room in there, to add some walls. I would like to point out that councilors' offices are already available for conducting private conversations with our students. That is at every site. That doesn't go away. There's there's plenty of rooms they can pull the student into if they need to have a private conversation. So why a private room? Why was that posted that that needed to happen? I'm sorry, that raised concerns by me and many others, especially when I see bills in Sacramento stating that wellness technicians can take away your kid if they feel a parent isn't safe, bypassing Child Protective Services. I don't want wellness centers as any kind of clinic, or anything other than a space where a child can go to get a break. I don't want the board to have to be forced or even put in a position to close down all wellness centers, because I know some schools had it way prior to COVID, and they do a lot of good for our students. But me, as a board member, I'm on a watch. There's stuff in Sacramento, and regardless of what some may think, it affects the daily business of what our amazing staff can and cannot do. And if we don't start speaking out and bringing awareness or fighting against these things, God forbid, because they're all in trouble, they cannot do what they do for your students. And I won't have that on my watch, no matter what, and I don't want it when I when I leave this spot. I was voted in here for a reason, and I will continue to advocate for our students and our parents. I'd like to read an article, or at least parts of it, you guys can all look it up, it's in the famous LA Times, that'll help you understand things don't always appear as they seem. So you guys can go to LA Times, there's an article, and actually, Mr. Cruz brought it up. It's LA County and Planned Parenthood to Open Fifty High Schools Sexual Health and Wellness Centers. This is not a conspiracy theory. Some people have other agendas that are not beneficial to the students, and that's where I'll stand in the in the front of that. This won't happen on my watch if there if if I have any part to be able to stop it. So I'm saying right now, yes, this is it is not in Chino Valley, but I ensure and I would hope that nobody would allow this in Chino Valley. Medical decisions should be done with the parent and their child with them, not against them, and not with the knowledge of of or no knowledge of the parent knowing that they're making medical decisions of any sort. The parents need to be involved, and this only proves to me that policy needs to be placed very soon to notify parents of things, to protect them from the crazy laws in Sacramento and the federal government coming down and putting things to fund these kinds of things. I'll remind you again, I was in Washington DC with a bunch of board members, and Becerra himself said, let me in, have cojones, and I have money. And you and you had people clapping, because he wanted to put clinics on sites. Now, think about it. I'm not saying this is what they're doing, but it's right here in the LA Times. It's right here in the LA Times what they're turning these wellness centers into. Why do you need private rooms and wellness centers? Right here in Chino Valley, it creeped up and on us. I still don't know why a private room was wanted in a wellness center. So I'm gonna read you a couple of things, just so you guys are, it's on record and you guys are aware of it. A high school stu- senior decided to recently that she wants to become sexually active with her boyfriend. But she's not yet comfortable talking to her mom about birth control and would be unable to get to a doctor's appointment on her own. Instead, she walked over to the new well-being center at schools during a free period. Let me remind you, schools are not going to or should never take the place of a parent being able to take care of their child. We're not a one, a all for none, or all for all. Why does a school need to have a clinic? Why do we need that responsibility? Why would our, why would we ever allow our staff to have that responsibility? That's insanity. Medical stuff needs to stay with that. Another part on the article, you guys can all read it for yourself. It was easy. Planned Parenthood runs a sexual health care clinic in East Esteban Torres High School in East LA once a week. The clinic is part of initiative funded by the LA County Departments of Public Health and Mental Health and Planned Parenthood of Los Angeles to open fifty such centers in schools throughout the county in the next year. Go look up Tony Thurman and his push on community schools. Look what's in community schools clinics. Not making this up. It's a great big push, and it's heavily funded, and it's a machine, if you parents are aware, I'm sure would stand in front of and not allow your child to make these decisions on their own. The centers include reproductive health clinics, where students can get birth control pills and condoms, tests and treatment for sexuality transmitted infections, emergency contraception such as Plan B, and pregnancy test and referral services far beyond what is typically offered by school nurses. Planned Parenthood is running five of the thirty-four sites that are open, offering more extensive birth control options, including um devices and arm implants. Here's another expert from this article. Because California law allows minors older than twelve to obtain confidential treatment and birth control, students can access the service at these clinics without parental parental consent. Look up the bills being proposed in Sacramento, they're now trying to lower that age of twelve. Just to remind you, this is not made up stuff. It's right there, the writing's on the wall. Planned Parenthood hopes to eventually operate all of the clinics and has committed five million dollars to the effort over the next five years, said Sue Dunlap, President and Chief of Executive Planned Parenthood of Los Angeles. Let me remind you, some of our ex-politicians in this community are backed up by Planned Parenthood, just saying. The county's Public Health Department is contributing about ten million in the first year and has committed to keeping the centers open for five years. On Friday, students can see a Planned Parenthood nurse or physician assistant in a modular clinic with an exam table, thick makeshift walls. Why were we making walls? I'm just asking you, I'm not assuming, but why were we trying to make walls in one of our wellness centers? You ask. Ask the person who's posting this, because I'm still waiting for an answer. And a white noise machine for privacy. The plan is to open six more clinics around LA County in the next year to reach the total of fifty. Don't think LA's too far from us. Sacramento and your elective uh politicians up there have tons of bills on the table that would prevent this amazing staff and our teachers and and everybody else in this um Chino Valley Unified School District from doing the great things that they do for your your children. We don't need clinics on our campuses, we never did, and we never will, and and I would hope we can all agree on that. Now, what I will say right now, right here, is an inflection point. It's an inflection point. You parents need to wake up, realize what's happening, join forces, support us for fighting back on this, and be aware of what's going on. This is the inflection point. There is no turning back. I would hope you link arms. I'm not making any of this up, you can look it up, reach out to me, I'll send you all the information. I'll send you the posts that I've seen myself. But at some point, you need to say, I love Chino Valley Unified School District, I love its staff, I believe in them. I'm going to support them to continue to educate our kids, not medically do anything for them or allow anything for that. Enough is enough. I'm looking into some policy. I'm not playing games, because all this fun stuff that we talk about, that's what I want to focus on. And every day, I can tell you, I see all of the, every single one of our board members up here and along with our staff working so very hard, sacrificing a lot to make sure our children have a great education. This stuff is noise, this stuff is roadblocks. At some point, everybody needs to join and say enough is enough. And with that, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but I will now adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting at seven nineteen PM. To sign all these.